To order full board meeting on February 11th, 2025. And start with the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call first.
Adina Hoover, Whitney Rogers.
Here.
Jess Redonia.
Here.
Carlos Avia, Angela Steckety.
Here.
Kevin Maron.
Here.
Leah Canover.
Here.
Okay, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2025 regular board meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the January 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to public comment. Looks like we've got one public comment from Ryan Wild. Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Ryan, I'm a senior at Westmont High School, and I'm here tonight to talk about the referendum. Unfortunately, I'm not for it, for many reasons. The lack of space in Westmont, there is no room to build a new school, a new K through five elementary school. When I saw you guys considered near Taiwana Park, I was for it. Looking more into it, I realized that the pollution over there would probably indefinitely increase. Even during the construction phase, Taiwana is such a beautiful park, beautiful park, and I can't justify the school going right across the street from over there. I don't want the park to be disturbed. I'm also worried about the traffic concerns over there as well. Blackhawk Drive, let's face it, Blackhawk Drive tends to get backed up all the time with all the junior high kids. And being an Oakwood resident, it's not pretty. All the cars backed onto Blackhawk and Oakwood, it's a big concern, and I just think that's like something that hasn't been brought up, you know, the traffic concerns. I know that you guys are trying to push it, and I get that, you know, but I also know that the schools are older, and I get that, they are gonna get older, but there's stuff that needs to be done, like, you know, keeping up with the schools. I mean, my dad went here, you know, he went through the school district as well as I'm going through it. So, you know, they need to be kept up. I also know, not to compare schools, but have you looked at Lyons Township North Campus High School? Way, way older than the Manning one, built in 1888. They've done the repairs, they are still standing. They didn't jump to the conclusion of, we need a referendum, you know, they didn't jump to that. Like, you know, here's so central, they had the expansions, they did not down the school, they stayed where they were. I also know that Manning and Miller are both brick buildings, which they are. Most of the new buildings aren't even built with brick. So even if it were to pass, how is it guaranteed that the brick will be built in place? Like, how are we gonna get good material, you know? That's like a big concern of mine. Also, for the people in this district that don't have kids, they be forced to be paying the tax, they be forced to be paying the price. And I know there are many, many people, they don't even know about the referendum, or even aware, you know, and that's just like, it's not right, in my opinion, you know? That they don't know about the referendum, and, you know, for you guys to say, you know, that's, oh, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. People aren't aware, like, there's no flyers, I don't even get a flyer in the mail about it, my parents don't get a flyer, you know? No communication whatsoever. I mean, the last thing we need right now, is this really a referendum? I know the country is not good as we speak, it is, it is bad right now, and I just think the last thing we need right now is a referendum, quite frankly, you know? So, on my behalf, I'm asking you to reconsider this referendum, not only for, you know, the people that are not having kids in the district, but also, you know, do we really want this? Do we really need this right now? It's now a good time to put a referendum on the table for discussions. And even for the people that don't have, you know, kids, or just live in the district, they would have no choice but to pay the taxes, and it just doesn't sit right with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations, Audrey Evans, long-term sub, Westmont Junior High School dual language, retirements and resignations, and number two, student tour requests, Westmont High School and Westmont Junior High School.
Zachy.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Steckety.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving into our information discussion portion of the eating, we're gonna do closed session after, because we've got our auditors here, presentation of fiscal year 2024 audit.
All right, well, thank you for having me, my name is Don Shaw, I'm the principal at Larrabaca Damon, and I've been managing the district audit this year, so. I first like to thank Anthony, John, and the entire team for making this another successful audit year. Without their help all year, this is not possible, so appreciate all the efforts from the team. Next, I'd go through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker the packets you received, and if you turn to page 12. You'll find the, sorry, do you guys have the packets?
We don't have the packets.
Okay. So I'll go quick.
Electronically, yes.
So we did apply and receive the award for 2023 audit year, we have applied for and expect to receive the same award for 2024. The next section is gonna be the independent audit report, in which we provide a clean, unmodified opinion. It's the highest opinion you can receive, basically states that we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they are presented. To see how the district performed in the current year, you can skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on page 36. Towards the bottom of the page, you'll notice that the total net decrease for the district as a whole was at $3.7 million. This does include your non-operating funds, such as your capital projects fund. However, in looking at just your operating funds, which would be your education, operations of maintenance, transportation, IMRF and TORT funds, the district actually had a net increase of $385,000 in the current year. The next section is gonna be the notes of the financial statements. This provides further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're gonna find your long-term debt and your capital asset schedules. And lastly, towards the back of the binder, you'll, on page 96, is the start of your budgetary information, so if you wanna see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you'd wanna go to see those comparisons. Anyone have any questions?
Can you explain for us and maybe our younger members of the audience, why we get audited in addition to, every year, right?
The audit is performed by state statute every single year on an annual basis, it's just to make sure that the numbers that are presented to the public are accurate, and we look and make sure that all the, how the money's being spent is proper.
And we hire an outside auditor to do that, so that we're not doing it inside, yes.
Correct.
Anybody else?
No.
I think we look good.
Thank you.
Don, thank you, we have copies of the audit at the central office, if anybody would wanna, from the public, see it, so we have the copy of that audit.
Yes, it'll be posted online.
And posted online, for everybody to see. Don, thank you so much.
Beth, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, elementary school building timeline.
I'd like to invite our teammates from Nicholas and Leggett to come up, in case there's questions. I think everybody on the board has a tentative timeline.
They should have one from Leggett and from Nicholas.
Hi guys, welcome.
So the first item is the elementary school building timeline. One of the things we discussed is that ideally, when it's only, everything is contingent upon the referendum passing, let's be clear about that, the April 1st vote will activate all these things. Without voter approval, April 1st, none of this can happen. But we are thinking ahead, we're working with our very experienced and excellent partners, and they have provided a timeline that would allow us to open in August of '27, if we follow this timeline. We cannot open mid-year a school, so you either open on August 27 or August 28. And we believe we're in such a situation that the sooner we can get into the new building, the less money we have to waste on unnecessary repairs, or put money, the hard-earned taxpayers' money, into a building that will not be functioning just the following year. So we want to do the timeline for an August of 2027 opening. So I'll leave it to Joe and Rob to kind of answer any questions.
So our timeline, we built it in about 20 months for construction phase. We have four budget checks, so as the design is progressing, we'll have four formal budget assessments, along with a lot of other supplementary budget information, but there'll be four formal assessments, just to control cost. We broke it up into two phases, so phase one would be building demolition and then site work prep, and then following that, coming out of fall of '25, we would move into the new construction, so that would start and commence in December of '25, and then it'd be a 20-month build from there.
And this gives us the optimal time to go out for bids, hopefully?
Yes, yep, absolutely. So it's a good, it's a good schedule, it's an efficient schedule, I wouldn't say it's aggressive, and I wouldn't say it's conservative, it's a good, it's a good schedule, and I expect tremendous contractor interest and turnout and great competitive bidding.
And we agree, we worked collaboratively on the schedule, the out-to-bid date in October is ideal, that's the best time to go for the, so we agree with that, and just backing out our schedule for designing the building through that, we think that's a comfortable timeline to take advantage of that bid period.
So the out-to-bid for phase one would be July, so right after the 4th of July. So that would be the phase one out-to-bid, and then we would commence with that late summer, late summer, complete that work in fall of '25, and like I said, move right into the new construction.
So phase, phase one is demo and prep.
And site prep.
Separate bid, and then we do another bid process for the actual construction.
So you could think of that as sort of enabling work, so buildings have to come down, we're gonna have a fair amount of utility relocation and removals, sort of generate a clean canvas and get off and running in December, hopefully it's a mild winter. But really, any work that we complete prior to spring of '26 is, it's a bonus, it's really setting us up, so we're, we're really off and running come, come '26 when the weather breaks.
As far as the bid process goes, there has been some questions from our community about how open that'll be, how transparent will be, you've done this many, many times. Can you explain to anybody who's watching and to our community at large about that process, and how open it is, how accessible the information is for people to see what's actually transpiring?
Sure, it's a public bid, we do not have a true pre-qualification process, so we don't tell anybody, no, you can't bid. So we'll prepare documents, Leggett will prepare plans and specifications, I'll prepare construction manager's instruction to bidders, which basically identifies the scopes of work for all the prime bid packages that we'll put out for public bidding, and from there, we'll post an ad for bid, we'll push it out, so everyone's aware of when the critical dates are for mandatory pre-bids, bid openings, all of those sorts of things, and, and off we're we go. So everything is transparent, public notices are posted, we'll certainly push it out to the district for posting on the website, and all that, so communication is always there.
So at every step of the process, if a community member was so inclined, they could see what's being bid out, who's bidding on it, and what the amounts were?
Yep, absolutely, it's a public bid opening here at the district, there'll be a formal bid tabulation, that'll also get posted, so 100% transparency.
What happens if someone, you mentioned there's like no pre-reparements on the bid, so what happens if someone bids and they're like not, how can you guys tell that like, whoa, these guys are not in good faith?
So, right, so that comment, I'm basically, prior to a bid opening, we would never tell a contractor, you cannot submit a bid, okay? Before the bid opening, we require all contractors that are submitting a bid to submit an A305, so it basically outlines some financial information from that particular firm, recently completed projects, current workload, things of that nature, so we can do our homework in our due diligence of every contractor that's planning on submitting a bid. In the event that they are the apparent low bidder, we'll kind of know a little more about that firm, and then we do scope reviews, make sure they understand the plans and specs, make sure they understand the design intent, so we'll go through all of that to ensure that they're a competent contractor, and then ultimately, we'll perform a formal letter recommendation to the district for approval. So there's a number of steps that we'll do to ensure that the full intent is realized, and off we go.
Because we are required to take the lowest bid, but the lowest bid of...
Lowest responsible bidder.
Responsible bidder, so, and you guys do that prep work to make sure that that lowest bid, because, because it's public funds that are paying for it, so we have to make sure that, that we take that lowest responsible bid, but you guys do the prep work to make sure that they are responsible. Questions?
No, I think that looks good, we appreciate you guys getting together and putting this together for us.
So the other thing we're suggesting too, is the possibility of starting some of the planning work early, we talked about this at the last board meeting, so we gave, you know, Mr. Baldeman a letter indicating what that process might look like. So we are suggesting three, maybe four meetings, basically a kickoff meeting to talk about the entire process, what the design process will look like, review the schedule, but get, you know, into the, some of the more minute milestones along the way of the design process. But we talked about the building program at the last meeting, so we would start talking about that, what are the requirements of every room in the building, you know, who's in the building, why are they in the building, what's the function of all the different spaces, and then we could actually start the process of, we call it an adjacency diagram, basically, to start to shape a floor plan, where you, now, once we know the quantity of rooms and the sizes of rooms, we can start to arrange the puzzle pieces into a floor plan. So these are relatively low-risk exercises that we could do before the referendum, and we would actually do them at no cost to the district, so it's something that we can do to, again, start the process, get the teams thinking about the work, and hit the ground running, once we're successful, hopefully on April 1st.
Yes, thank you very much for that.
Yes.
Yes, I wanted the community to know what a big deal this is, this is really special. When the referendum lost by one vote in November, we kind of put the August of '27 opening in jeopardy, because there's a lot of collaborative work on the design that takes place, and there's bid openings, and there's seasons to build. So what everybody doesn't know is that Nicholas and Leggett got together and looked at this timeline and said, listen, we cannot guarantee an August 27 opening unless we start on the drawings now. Correct me, jump in, you two are the experts. We're very fortunate, because we have people who take this seriously, have amazing experience. So they worked together collaboratively, but very honestly, about what the timeline would look like, and the opening was definitely in jeopardy. But they both came together, and then we were in a situation where these drawings that some people in the community have asked for are not done for free, that the architects have to put time in to make this happen, and their time and expertise comes with the prices, you would expect, if you have a high-quality architectural firm like we do. So we were in a situation where the district was gonna have to put up tens of thousands of dollars, Rob, could you give us an estimate, or Joe, what would that be approximately?
Well, yeah, we talked about $25,000 for the services that I've outlined in the letter, so, but it could be more than that, depending on how much risk you want to assume moving forward.
So we wanted to come to the board, everybody just play this out here, the board would have to make an investment, and without the guarantee of the April referendum happening, we could be expending monies that maybe would not be used for this current season. So to take that risk out of our hands, Leggett agreed to do the work at no cost. Now, if the referendum passes, then the referendum will pay for this, but the architectural firm, Leggett, is putting themselves out there, and I won't put words in Rob's mouth, I would like to hear why you would do this, we're very, very grateful, but tell us a little bit.
Well, we, we're about the relationship, right? We said that when we interviewed with you, that we're not just here for the one-and-done project, we want to build a relationship and be your architect long-term, and this is part of that process to getting to know you and your community, and frankly, we want to have some skin in the game too, we know that you are at risk, and you're putting yourselves out there with the community, and we're willing to share that risk and show our commitment to you and your constituents.
Greatly appreciated, and Joe, too, we're grateful for your expertise, because I think everybody came together and said, if we don't do this now, and the referendum passes in April 1st, we could be waiting another year to occupy the building and incurring costs, so could you say a little bit about that, please?
Absolutely, yeah, it's all about the relationship and moving things forward, and what needs to happen here, it's the right thing to do, it's as simple as that, it's the right thing to do, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're forcing the design, it's very important, the design is as thorough and accurate as possible, so when we go out to bid, we have solid numbers, so we're excited, and we're gonna, we're gonna, just gonna get this process going, and, you know, we're just really excited to get this underway, so.
Once again, it's an opportunity for the community to have input, for us to see some more detail, which people have called for, even though we really haven't even passed a referendum, we're getting in some upfront views on what it could possibly look like, and we're starting the process. So for those who said we need more detail, we're getting even more detail than we're entitled to. So this is really special, and I want to remind everybody too, that there were many different construction management firms and architects, many quality, experienced firms that wanted to work with CUSD 201, and the board went through a very elaborate process and chose these two wonderful firms, and our partnership is paying off, so just want to remind people, we're working with some of the best in the industry, you can go find out about their reputation, the board had choices, I think they chose wisely, and now we're seeing that payoff. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for your commitment, you've been at every single meeting, answering every question the public had, you've been to all of our board meetings, and now you're giving us a process to kind of make sure that this process is done right, very grateful.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, deepest thanks, deepest thanks, and, you know, for, for both of you guys, right, a couple of things that were super important to me in particular, when we were making the decision on our construction manager and architects, was that our construction manager understood our area, right? And one of the things that you guys do is space-constrained areas, right? You, you build brand-new buildings next to the old buildings, and make sure that like, and that was one of the things that, that really stood out for me in, in your stuff, right, that you know how to work in unique situations, and we're certainly a very unique situation here, and you bring tons of expertise, and you guys do schools, and schools in older districts with old buildings, and was incredibly important in bringing that expertise to it, and Leggett, you guys, the community piece of it, you know how deeply connected we want to be to the community, and this piece of the community partnership in order to build the menu, and, and it's not a, this is what you need, just believe us, right? And, and while there's probably about 100 things that are, this is what you are required to have, believe us, right, by statute, you guys just, just are so dedicated to making community schools and being an exceptional partner in the community, so... So, um, I continue to be happy with the decisions that, that the board made, and, um, just deepest thanks and faith, and faith in, in our community and, and in this project, so, and hopefully, future ones too. Anybody else?
Do you see any reason why we couldn't post these and make these known to everybody in the community?
That was my question for Scott, I think that would be great.
Get them up.
I mean, this is what the community's asked for, detail to show, so we will post...
Like, every detail we get, that we can check.
There we go. So, we will post the very detailed, several page, and once again, it's like any kind of a plan, there may be some important revisions or adjustments in the process, but this is very well thought out by people who are experts in the field, uh, and if we post this, it'll show once again, our people, our teammates know what they're doing, the board knows what they're doing, we're proceeding with, you know, a real specific game plan. So, we can post the process here and the design process here.
Yes, please.
So, people see the level of detail that is included in our planning.
And I think with a big headline of no cost to us, I mean, that's huge. It's so generous, and...
We appreciate that.
So, we'll get these, can we get these in the board docs public, but then also on the reference? So, we have them in, so we have the, um, historical record in the board docs, but then also the easy access, cause they know we're updating that referendum pretty deeply?
Yeah, we're, the, the part about informational, referendum information is being updated and should be launched by this Friday, uh, Monday at the latest, and it will include a lot of this detail, the step-by-step, you know, as Joe said, 20-month process for how this would build out would occur, and then, uh, the details from Leggett on all of the, uh, project, the, the scope of services, and the planning meetings, and schematics, and everything else.
My only caution would be that the schedule from Nicholas, this is locked, right? This is, we're, we're going to adhere to the schedule. Some of the dates that I have in, in the Leggett proposal letter might not be locked in, we need to talk about those, so...
Yes.
Maybe we can make that part of it public until the board agrees that that's the timeline they want to follow before the referendum hits.
Um, I did have a question. What do you need from us, as far as, like, you needed a committee, I think you mentioned last time?
I, I think there needs to be a core team of decision-makers. So, the kickoff meeting can be as large, you know, a group that you want it to be, but ultimately, when we start talking about the literally million decisions that need to be made, it's better if that's a, a smaller group, uh, that we can meet with on a regular basis, that could be every two to three weeks, it could be once a month, depending on what you want to do and how much detail you want to, want to see. So, I would recommend that, yeah, you start thinking about who that group is that we're meeting with.
Ideal number of people?
I think you said about five to six, when you said that.
Five to six is about right.
Okay.
And ideal makeup, like, who?
I think that's up to you, but I, you know, board member, administration, a community member, maybe, I think, you know, who's, people that you want to, that you trust to make good decisions and that are in the know about the finances, the purpose of the project, the goals, expectations, that it's, you know, a unified group of people that are, are moving the project forward, wanting to move the project forward.
All right, we, we'll, we'll converse and we'll get, but the board, I think, is committed to seeing this move forward, right? But it's, it actually starts in the upcoming, in February, with the planning process.
Right, right. That's what we're suggesting, is a week, week and a half, two weeks from now, is when we're starting, when we have that first, you know, large group meeting potentially to start to, um, again, talk about the process, talk about the goals, write a mission statement, you know, talk about where we want to be, you know, in 2027 with the project, and then we can start the process.
Okay, let's get her done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome for your expertise.
Thank you so much, yeah.
And for the way you've collaborated together, it's very encouraging.
And this is an important step. You've heard me talk about the process and the structure and following the structure. This is, this is our template, so I'm glad, I'm glad you said that it's locked in.
It's locked.
And it's on video now.
He actually said it was locked in.
I know he did.
Followed suit, so...
I've been waiting 22 years for an architect to tell me it's locked in.
It's locked in. Well, you got, you got it tonight, you gotta write it down.
It's great, but it's gonna be a team approach, and it has to be, so, and it will be, so, we're excited.
Making dreams come true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. Thanks, boys and girls. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for your great questions.
All right, see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think that essentially covered our first three discussion items?
Yes.
Want to see how quickly we're going.
The board wants to proceed, and you might need some, proceed with the timeline that Leggett has set out for the schematic?
I think so, but we really need to lay out that core group that's going to be laying out the plans.
He said, yeah, like a team of admins, approximately five or six people, so...
What do you need from us to do that? Jack, do you want board members to send you suggestions?
Yeah.
Questions, names, or...
Sure. Please send that to me and Shannon. I think it does make sense, based on what Rob and Joe said, that there's a board member on the team, so you have to choose who that would be, and that's a board decision. Um, we'll make an admin present, we have community members who are either architects or involved in construction, that we know who those people are, and we'll offer an opportunity for them to be a part of it. Well, obviously, so that would include parent, community member, who's got deep, uh, background in construction or architecture or both? What else, who else would you like to see on that?
Well, I mean, I, me, my thought on like the core decision team is like 2-2-2, two board members, two admin, two community members, and essentially, it's a, uh, if someone needs to miss a meeting, right, like, if someone, so you kind of always have...
You want like an alter, like some alternates?
Essentially, it's not really like an, but there's always an alternate of that representation, cause it, cause it sounds like this group is going to be pretty, uh, deeply needed for a long period of time.
Yeah, cause he said they're gonna be meeting like every two to three weeks.
Yeah.
For like months. Right.
And months, so...
And months.
That's kind of, that was kind of my thought on it. What do you guys, I'm sorry, Leah, what'd you say? Uh, I'm thinking like 2-2-2. If it's like five to six people, two board members, two admin, two community members, so that there's kind of always like, essentially like an alternate, if like, someone can't make it, there's, but then there's always like representation from kind of like all the three big core legs, right, essentially, on this core team. That was what I was thinking.
I think that makes sense, yeah. I mean, I don't think we need to have admin from the junior high or the high school, cause I'm thinking about like, ideally, there's an administrator from all the different schools, but I, then I was like, well, we don't need that necessarily.
I don't know, I think on the core team, like, so...
We only have three admin at...
Right, that's what I think.
Those two schools.
That works.
Right.
Yeah. Well, in that case, do we just say all three of them then? You know?
I, mm-hmm. My thought was also, should we, shouldn't we have a social worker?
Yeah, really, yeah. On the core team?
Support staff.
Yeah. Maybe as an admin, but or...
Alternate.
Teaching staff, just, just because, to plan this correctly.
Well, remember something, there will be social workers and teachers who will be a part of the collaborative process.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like, so there's a core team that's kind of overseeing the administrative aspects of the project, and then there'll be input, certainly, from social workers, educators, teachers, classroom people.
Yeah. This is not the team like planning, this is the team that's like, yes, do it, check, done, being the final decision, not final decision, cause, but taking that larger too.
You take in the scenario, ideally, would be Sam. Do we take Carla? And have, and have Carla be part of it, since she oversees that whole education aspect?
I think I'd like to leave the admin up to Jack. Who knows only better?
But, yeah, but one thing we will need is, if you want two board members, who would they be? And that's, that's what I need from the board to decide. I'm not saying you have to decide it tonight, obviously, but you need to decide it in the near future, because they're really talking about, if you follow Leggett's timeline, starting next week.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, if we knew who the board members were, and we'll have admin, um, and then we will have community members, and knowing our district, we might have more than just, maybe we'll have three, maybe, if you want, I could run those names past the board to who we choose from each different sector. To Angie's point, I think what you're, I'm not just assuming, you want somebody with the insights of a social worker as an example to have...
Social worker psychologists, knowing how the layouts need to be.
Absolutely, that, yes, that will, yeah, please, yeah, of course. Come up here, please.
Come on up, Carla.
Come up, so they can hear you.
I wish Leggett was here to talk, but, um, I've been through a construction process before, and it was with Leggett, actually, so, um, coincidentally, it's Leggett, and they, um, are super collaborative, so everyone will be part of that team when it comes to like the instructional piece of it, every building administrator who's involved, social workers, anyone you want to be on the team, when they come to like the design process and the education piece of it, everyone will be able to be involved. I think this is a different kind of team, this is just like that core team.
This is almost like the admin team of the...
Right. Admin team of the team.
Yes, it's almost like the administrative team.
The principals of the building and whoever else you want will be able to pick out like colors of the carpet and the layout of the room for flow, and like, it's a really involved collaborative process.
I think that's super helpful to hear, cause I think no, nobody wants anybody in the building to feel like, well, we, we're the experts who live in this every day, how come we didn't?
And they'll all be able to have a part in it.
Really, really reassuring.
Yeah, and I, Leggett could speak to that way better than I can, but just being through it, you know, I, as a former principal, I wasn't on that core team, but I was certainly involved in the process of like picking out where the playground should be and what it should look like, and picking out the playground equipment and all of those pieces, so...
That's, that's good.
Good to know. Awesome, thank you, Carla.
And I think that's helpful too, cause I don't want, like, if we go 2-2-2, and then there's three community, like, I don't want this thing to get too big, and so, I'm not sure we even need two board members, like, unless you guys feel strongly that we do.
I just think having, having, having an alternate, I think is important.
Right.
If somebody can make it, because, because this, this committee can't be slowed down if someone's not available.
Present, yeah.
And so, in order to just keep, you know, cause the board members are gonna have different, uh, different takes on those decisions than the admin, than the community, so, that's my thought on the 2-2-2, it's just that, um, or more, but I do think this team has to, has to be.
Like, I, I just personally like your idea that there's always gonna be one board member present, doesn't always have to be two present, is that what sort of kind of everything?
Yeah.
So, if both can make it, that's a nice thing, at least one can always make it.
Maybe on the 2-2-2, the board always has an alternate, and they're not technically considered that core group, but the board is an alternate person.
I don't think we need to get that.
I, I'm just saying.
I don't think we need to get that, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think the piece of it, that there's always someone from each of these groups in each, in each meeting that needs to happen is the important part of it, so...
Good, we'll get rolling on that, I'll talk to Rob again, at this, we'll start convening, uh, in, in the next week and a half, so...
We need some, we, uh, dates and Fridays update? I know that's a real quick turnaround.
Yeah, I could talk to Rob about that, I mean, yes.
What kind of a commitment is this, like during the day or like board meeting time?
Um, gosh, I wish they would've stuck for that. I think, because we're gonna have community members and board meetings, I, I anticipate it'll be like an afternoon or early evening piece. I don't think it's gonna be a...
I want, I can reach out to Rob too, to see if they'll do them in like a Zoom, or if everyone has to convene, you know, so I'll email him.
That's helpful. When we were, when we were doing, when we were doing them with, um, consultants, we did Zooms, and it was just, and it was like, early afternoon, kind of whenever, whenever worked for everybody, for the most people, but it was fine to do Zoom.
We'll get that detail, and then we'll start forming the committee, and it's gonna start in the next week and a half to two weeks.
Awesome. Okay, moving right along, quality data review. Carla.
I love when he does that. Um, so, this is our mid-year update, so just a, a note that this is just a, this is a mid-year update, so we're at the halfway point, so we haven't met our goals yet, but this is to show our progress toward our goals. Um, so, just to give you a, a timeline of the process that we use, um, that we've been using for the past two years, is at the end of the school year, we meet with team leaders, coaches, department chairs, and administrators to reflect on the year, and we create areas of focus for that following year. Um, also, at the end of the year, we do a comprehensive data review to see, did we meet our goals that we set at the beginning of the school year? Um, and, um, we do a huge, high-level overview of all of the data that we have, we compile it together to see if we've met our goals, to, um, compare that up with the areas of focus, and, um, to ensure we're on the, the right track. So, we do, we start our next year planning at the end of the school year. Um, over the summer and in the beginning of the year, we set our exact goals with team leaders, coaches, department chairs, and administrators. Um, also, over the summer, administrators and team members create action plans for the school year to ensure that our goals are met. And then, in September, January, and May, we have a comprehensive data overview, um, which is what I'm reporting on right now, so this is the mid-year January mark, um, this is the comprehensive data overview, and at that time, um, we look at so much data, um, we sort it out by subgroup, we look at, um, growth, we look at proficiency, we look at different, um, bands, um, in math and ELA, um, and we sort it out in science, um, and we just have a big, high-level conversation to say, "Okay, what are some, how are we progressing toward our goals? Um, do we need to update our action plans?" Um, so, that is, we're at the mid-year point, and we'll do another one in May to see if we've met our goals. We have monthly DLT meetings, um, and those are tailored to our areas of focus and goals. That includes teachers throughout the district, administrators, um, our team leaders in the district. We have monthly team leader meetings, um, we provide our team leaders with PD support, and, uh, we collaborate our, around our goals and areas of focus. And then, weekly, we have our Wednesday collaborative team meetings, and that's focused on ensuring the growth and high levels of learning of all students, and at those meetings, that's when we're really looking at our formative assessments and our summative assessments that are teacher-created, and all based around standards to ensure that our kids are all learning and growing at high levels. So, that sounds like a lot, but it's been really a great process, that everyone is involved, um, we have an amazing team at West Ma. Um, so, these are our goals, and I'm gonna go through each one of these goals to show our progress, mid-year again, so we're not there yet, but we're on our way to reaching these goals for the school year. Um, our end-of-the-year ELA goal is that 65% of our students will meet or exceed on the IAR ELA assessment, um, and third-through-eighth grade students take that IAR assessment. While our kids don't take IAR until April, we are able to use iReady to kind of do, um, in conjunction with our formative and summative assessments, to kind of get a little picture of, are we on, on track to meeting our goal? And currently, 56% of our third-through-eighth grade students are scoring at that early-on, mid-or-above-grade level on iReady. So, at this point, and that doesn't take into account the writing, our, our teams have been focusing a lot on writing and getting our kids to write more, um, and we're on track at this point. If we look at last year where we were, we're actually higher this year than we were last year, and we had an amazing year. So, um, this is, our kindergarten through second graders, they don't take the state assessment, so we use iReady, we use unit assessments, um, we use teacher-created assessments. Um, but our goal for this, uh, we set a really high goal for our kindergarten through second grade team, we said 77% of our students will be mid, late, or above-grade level, um, by the end of the school year. If we ended the year today, we have 59% of our students already at that mark, so, um, that looks really promising for us as well. And then, this is our growth goal, um, we set a really lofty growth, growth goal of 75%. Last year, we were at 69% at the end of the school year, we set the goal at 75. At this point in time in ELA, um, if we compile all kindergarten through eighth grade, um, 63% of our students are on track to meeting their end-of-the-year growth goal. At this point in time in ELA, um, if we compile all kindergarten through eighth grade, um, sixty-three percent of our students are on track to meeting their end of the year growth goal. Which is higher than it was last year at the same point in time. And then for the high school, high school's in a really interesting situation because they're shifting from SAT to ACT. So our high school team has done an extensive amount of work around um, really preparing for the ACT and making this shift. We don't have all of the information from the state on how it's scored, how they're going to calculate. So our team has done all of the research they possibly can and done the absolute best that they can to, to set these goals. This is a little bit of stabbing in the dark because we're not really sure where the cut scores are going to be or, or all of those details. So last year on the SAT, we were at fifty-seven percent. We set a goal for the ACT of sixty percent because we always want to shoot higher. The ACT has broken down um, that whole reading score. They have an English ACT, a reading ACT and the essay ACT. So these are, right now, if they took it today, this is where we would be. I believe that they're going to average the three scores equally, but we don't know for sure yet, so.
Before we leave this slide, which I think is really important, the, you see fifty-seven percent of the students met the uh, Illinois State Benchmark in ELA. And you could say fifty-seven percent, that doesn't sound very high. That score is in the top four percent in Illinois of all high schools. So there's six hundred and fifty high schools, top twenty-five, maybe higher than that. But you could look at fifty-seven percent and say, that doesn't seem very impressive. It's in the top four percent of Illinois, including all schools. So that's, it's just the way, they, the, the state sets the bar super high uh, for whatever reason, uh, which is fine. But I just, I'm going to come back to this at the end. When you see a number like fifty-seven or sixty percent, it's like, well, what about the rest of the kids? They don't measure growth in Illinois at the high school level. They do at three through eight, which is awesome and I wish we did at the high school, but they don't do that. But when you see those numbers, you have to put it in a context. So fifty-seven percent of students meeting in ELA, you may say, that doesn't sound very good. It's exceptional. It's top four percent. So I just want to make that.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation because I, because I agree fifty-seven percent.
Right.
Yeah, doesn't look very impressive.
It, it's not saying like we have forty percent of our kids who can't read. That's not what I'm saying.
Right, right. They have to, at, at the time, you had to score a five forty on the SAT. Now, the national, the college board and the people who create the SAT say that the benchmark should be four eighty. Well, if that was the case, we would have an extremely higher number of kids meeting. For some reason, Illinois sets the bar at sixty points higher on the SAT when we're using this goal. Same thing with the ACT. I think they're going to use twenty-two as the benchmark.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to get in the weeds too much. I'll be very brief. It's a bell curve. They guarantee that half the kids are going to fail or not get the average. So the twenty-two is an above average score on ACT. So the very test itself is guaranteeing that students in the state of Illinois, the majority of them will not meet the benchmark. It's very strange. So all these things have to be put in the context.
Yeah, high school is a very different calculation than elementary.
And I think, I don't think they'll average them actually because you'll.
You don't? Okay.
They don't, no. So it'll be um, English, reading, essay is separate, um, and then you get the composite, math, science.
They do a composite school.
Science is optional now and so I think that's another thing as we move, like, is that going to remain a requirement for our students to take it? And are we doing, are we doing digital or have we not decided that yet?
Digital.
But, so when it says meet or exceed, we're talking about those, um, like what ACT says is the college readiness benchmark. And it is, it's twenty-two tier point, it's pretty lofty. I think it's eighteen for reading, so a little bit.
Yes, exactly.
But yeah, I, all, all of it I think is important for us to just become informed about um, with that shift.
It's the first year doing ACT.
Yeah.
So we're learning with everybody else, but our teachers are very prepared. They're giving our juniors uh, four to five full practice tests to prepare and they're analyzing the data constantly. Same in math.
The practice, the practice test is really good. I'm glad to hear that they'll have those. I think it's going to help because I know when I was in school. You know, we had the option of doing ACT or essay. I did the ACT. So, you know, I mean, just being honest, you know, and transparent, so, and that was the benchmark. Like you said, it was twenty-two even then. And if you got like anywhere between the eighteen and the twenty, it was like, yes, you know, because you were kind of like, right in the middle, you know, and it balanced out. Exactly. So I think a lot of the students may be relatively surprised, you know, with this shift, you know, in their first year, that I think a lot of them are going to do really well. I really do, because I'm like you Jess, is, the good thing about it is, is um, composite, you know, it's not where it's like, oh, if I bum this, then I'm, you know, I'm just done, you know? So I think a lot of them are, are in a position to do really well and with the, the prep tests, you know, it's definitely going to help, so.
Our high school teachers are exceptional too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, and to the point on the scores, right, being, that was what it was when I was in high school, right? Eighteen to twenty-two and like, yes.
Exactly.
And I think that piece of like that, the, the, you know, parents in our community might not always quite realizes. Those scores haven't changed because the test changes every year.
Exactly.
Because the tests are designed for, they're designed for fifty percent to be above, they're designed for fifty percent to be below and they change every year. Based on that design and that's how we're able to, that's how, oh, it seems the same. It's not the same ACT. Now, we all took, even though.
Right.
The scoring may feel so.
Right.
Well, and that's another one of their big changes that they're rolling out, is they're actually making it a little shorter. They're allowing more time for questions.
Exactly.
And instead of four, five options for multiple choice, they're moving it to four. So there's a lot that's changing.
Right.
And it'll just be interesting, every confidence that the teachers are going to do an awesome job with it and appreciate the practice and the way that. They're looking at just embedding, those skills are already embedded in our curriculum, so that's the great news. Like they've been, the students do these things all the time, so. Eager to hear more.
Yeah. Um, so now math, if we look at uh, third through eighth grade, again, we don't have IAR right now. We set a goal. Last year, we had fifty percent of our students. This year, we set the goal for fifty-five. We wanted to raise that. So currently, if um, fifty-one percent of our third through eighth grade students are scoring early on, mid or above, and we're only half, halfway through, so. We're, we're on track. And this is again, um, if we look at midpoint last year to midpoint now, we're in a better place this year than we were last year and we had an amazing year last year. For kindergarten through second grade, we set a really high bar with iReady. If we, if we said the end of the year is tomorrow, which we have plenty more time, but if we said that, we have fifty-four percent of our kindergarten through second grade students. Already scoring mid or above. Um, and we're, our goal is for seventy percent by the end of the school year. So our challenge right now is to make sure we are extending and enriching the learning of our students and making sure we're challenging them because we already have this really big chunk of students who are. Who are exactly where they need to be or above. In kindergarten through eighth grade, our growth goal, we set these highs. We, we say every kid can and should grow at high levels. So we set the goal at seventy-five percent. Right now, we're at sixty-two percent on track to meeting their end of the year math growth goals. Which is again, higher than it was last year.
Can I ask you a quick clarification question, just about the mean, the meaning of growth goals? So when you say seventy-five percent are meeting their growth goal, but student A and student B might have different growth goals, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. It's based on um, students at the same level, so they're like same scale score? Yes, great question. And then math ACT, same exact um, explanation as ELA. Right now, um, if they took the test today, we project it would be forty percent, so. But that's the same conversation we had about the ELA ACT. So we're, we're shooting in the dark here a little bit. I mean, our team is super well informed as much as they possibly can be. We have a PLC goal as well. Um, we said by the end of the school year, all buildings will have a collaborative teacher's final score of very strong. Where are we at mid-year? We obviously don't have five essentials mid-year, but we did a self-reflection on our PLC progress using a PLC continuum. And overwhelmingly, ninety percent of our staff stated that they were in the developing and sustaining stages, which is really great. That means that our teams are functioning at high levels, um, and they're really working to, to make sure our kids grow and achieve. Our chronic absenteeism goal is a huge celebration too. We set a really lofty goal here too. Seven point five percent or less, we said all buildings will have seven point five percent or less students who are considered chronically absent. At this point, this was as of January twenty-third, pre-flu A outbreak everywhere. But we were at seven percent on January twenty-third throughout the district, which is a huge celebration. We're a little bit higher right now. I don't know the exact number, but it's a little bit higher um, because of the flu and.
And strep throat.
Strept throat, yeah, all of those fun things.
I think that's so important to highlight though too, because um, and I'm sure you guys saw this, but that education recovery scorecard came out and they specifically talk about absenteeism and how that has really hurt progress and growth over the past two years. So if, when that goes down, the scores should go up too.
Exactly. That's huge. Thank you. So we also identified areas of focus at the beginning of this school year and I want to report on those. So we said we want results orientation, equity and student engagement are a big three for this school year. So I wanted to share a little of the work that we've been doing. Um, so results orientation is really just saying we're focusing on student learning outcomes. We have these high level tasks. We have iReady, we have IAR, but we really are rooted in standards. We're rooted in our, our common formative assessments, our common summative assessments that our teachers create. Which link to those higher stakes tests, but we really want to ensure that our kids are meeting grade level standards and that they're leaving the grade level, um, making adequate growth. So we're not just teaching. We want to ensure our students are actually learning and we're continuously improving. So how are we doing that? Our teams throughout the district are continuously engaged in the teaching assessing cycle. Teach, you assess, you analyze, you adjust and you act on that data. And that's just constantly happening. Kindergarten through twelfth grade in our district, preschool too actually. Their goals look a little different, but they're, they're learning and growing too. We have SMART goals that are set by grade level subject area teams on our essential standards. We're examining common formative assessment data during our collaborative team meetings consistently and we're tracking to ensure our kids are meeting um, those standards. We're utilizing all data that we have. We want to have a full comprehensive um, view because we know not every child is going to show everything we need them to show on an iReady test. So we have, we have lots of data we're using. And we're leveraging every meeting possible to ensure our students are growing and achieving. In terms of equity, um, we've done a lot of work around equity. We said at the beginning of the year, we really wanted to focus on engagement structures and we want to make sure they're embedded in all classrooms throughout the district. Because what happens oftentimes in classrooms is that kids can hide. And we want to make sure that all kids are, are engaged, actively engaged, um, and that they're all talking. So we have had frequent staff PD throughout the year on engagement structures. We've done walkthroughs. Teachers have visited each other's classrooms. Um, and we have more students talking and fewer students hiding. So that's a really big celebration for us. Co-teaching, Manning and the junior high have really moved to a co-teaching model for our um, special education, which is a gen ed teacher and a, a special education teacher working together. Which has really been super beneficial and provided equitable access to grade level standards for all of our students. And they've done a lot of scaffolding for students with IEPs to ensure that they're able to access that grade level content. Which has been a huge celebration. Um, and that shows in, in our data. So if we look at our subgroup data and we look at special education and, and our EL population. The, um, their growth this year is much higher than it was last year. So that's a big celebration for us. Our curriculum planning days, we're making sure that those are, um, we're looking through those with an equity lens and we're including representatives from the grade levels, all subject areas. There's an EL representative, special education interventionist administrators to make sure that we're um, looking at all of our learners. We've done a, a big push for heterogeneous grouping. Our parent liaison has been amazing. She's worked with families from all buildings. She's been helpful to answer parent questions. She talks to parents about attendance, academics, really anything and everything. Parents are able to reach out to her. And she provides a lot of really great parent to parent support. We focus on subgroup data at every single administrator, administrator meeting every other week. Our collaborative team meetings, it's a focus. In all meetings throughout the school year, um, we've really tried to dig into the subgroup data. We've had one-to-one meetings. Our principals have actually done a lot of work around one-to-one meetings with students and families. Around attendance and academics and just having those conversations to provide parent education, student education and to teach them and support them along the way. Our EL and dual team has done so much work. Uh, this is only a snapshot of what they've done this year. And I think this is going to show at the end of the school year when we get our access results back to see language acquisition. It's been pretty incredible to see. Teacher training throughout the district is we're moving toward all teachers are EL teachers. Because regardless, you're going to have students um, who are learning a new language in your classroom. And so we're moving to that. And so all teachers have been provided training on language acquisition. There's been an increase in teachers just asking for supports to help their students to grow. Edith and Jessica have done an amazing job of, um, they have newcomer protocols, so when we have newcomer students. They have protocols to help them feel welcomed and parent interviews and um, it's just a nice wraparound process to help them feel welcomed and comfortable coming to school. There's been increased cope, increased coaching support for our dual team. And all teachers who have EL students, so that's every teacher in our district. There's been coached presence at problem solving meetings, curriculum planning meetings to make sure that we're always looking through that lens, that EL lens. A big, a greater focus this year on access and language development. We've been celebrating students, meeting with students, providing teachers with training. A lot of really solid work has gone into our dual and our EL. And that's showing too, that our students with IEPs and our EL students are showing more growth this year than they were last year. And in most, in most um, grade level bands, they're performing at, in terms of growth, not proficiency yet, but in terms of growth, they're at the same level as their peers. And majority of the grade bands, which is not something we saw last year.
I, I love that, uh, you know, more students talking, fewer hiding. There's a kid that hid, you know, and slid by.
It's easy to hide.
Yeah, it was too easy.
Yeah, I had too.
I love that, that they're engaging the students.
It is. It, it's really fun to see. If you ever want to come and observe in a classroom, it's fun to see them do an engagement structure because they. There are all these like fun, creative ways where they get up and they, they talk to each other and you say like, this partner, this person shares first and then this person shares and you're ensuring that every kid is talking.
Right, right.
It's really great.
For me, it wasn't till I went to college and, you know, it took me on my comfort zone and it was a good thing.
Exactly, yeah. But it's been really fun. So if you ever want to come watch, we'll, we'll find you the perfect place to go. We had a great year last year, so in closing, we had a great year last year and we're, we're having another really great year. So this year, uh, we have a greater number of kindergarten through eighth grade students at this point this year. On track to achieve their end of the year EL and math growth than we did last year. And that's pretty exceptional because we had a really great year last year. Same with proficiency. We have more students proficient at this time, um, this year than we did last year, so. They're all great celebrations. Um, and I just want to emphasize that iReady, IAR, they might be our big goals, but we're always rooted in standards. We're rooted in um, our common formative assessments, our CSAs to ensure our kids are meeting grade level. I mean, we're making sure that we're providing support for them to help them grow, so. Any, any questions?
Just a comment, it's truly exciting, you know, to see the district continue to go in the right direction. You know, the, the teachers, the admin, everybody's doing a great job, so it's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Uh, our entire team is amazing. They're incredible. So we have, yeah, every single person.
Well, Dr. Braun takes the lead in this process and she said, oh, don't leave this check because I want to show that next slide, please.
Okay.
But she takes the lead in this process and it is a whole team effort. But she's very measured in her assessments and I put our results last year against anybody in the state, anybody. They were unbelievable. And not just the bottom line exemplary ratings and the growth incredible and, but when she tells me that her assessment. Is that we're doing as well, if not better, this year. I'm really excited because we had an excellent year last year.
Just have to finish strong.
Yeah.
We, yeah, that's the thing. This is the time when people kind of either going to keep pushing or they back up and we're just not that way. It's a whole team effort. And I think we're pushing our teachers harder than they've ever been pushed. I'll say that. But they're responding. It's a whole-team effort, and I think we're pushing our teachers harder than they've ever been pushed, I'll say that, but they're responding, and sometimes there's some anxiousness around that. Uh, but they're responding, and we tell our students, you do the best you can, and it will be good enough.
Absolutely.
There's not that kinda like, you better, no, we're here to learn, we're here to grow, do your best, and we will be in good shape. Work hard, yes, but your learning is paramount to us. One last thing, can you, I think I added one slide, unless you took it off.
Did you wanna say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, you know, kind of to that point, and what you said, too, I really think it's important to, I like how you mentioned that they're looking at those common formative assessments in that day-to-day, because I do think, because we are such an astounding district, we have a lot to say about our really good test scores and our growth with those standardized test scores, but I don't want that to be mistaken for, like
Right.
we just teach to the test, because that's not
Right, no, that's not what we do.
So, I just wanted to
Yes.
um, emphasize how important that is, and how grateful we are that that happens on a weekly basis.
It does, yes, thank you for saying that.
I put one more slide, so this, I just wanna make a point very quickly, and this is a graphic representation. So, some people will see, like, the sixty-seven percent proficiency as an example, and say, whoa, what is that, that doesn't seem very impressive. It's gotta be put into context, just like if somebody heard that a baseball player was, you know, a three-hundred hitter, that means they only get a hit three out of ten times. It doesn't seem, but it's an excellent batting average. Here is the graphic representation of three thousand schools in Illinois, right? Uh, all the elementary schools and all the junior highs in one graph. That's where Westmont Junior High, uh, ended up ranking last year, and they had a sixty-seven percent proficiency on reading. So, you've gotta put the numbers in context, that's extremely important, and they were number two out of nine hundred and thirty-one, according to I, Illinois State Board of Education. So, that's, it's important to put it in the context, all this data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Braun. Excellent work. Carla's the one who leads this process for the district. A lot of great people make this stuff happen, so.
Okay, moving right along, uh, policy committee report, second reading of the policies, so at the last board meeting, we looked over these policies, which is the first reading of the policies, um, and the updates as recommended by press. So, this is the second reading, do I have to read the policies?
No.
Yeah.
That's anywhere.
Anything to discuss on any of these policy updates? This is an action item tonight, because it is the second, it is the second reading.
No, I think press did their job.
Yeah, press is the expert.
Yeah, the experts at it, and
That they are, that they are.
Points out all those legal things that we need to pick and point and write, and, yeah.
Okay, um, so then, let's move into our action items, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented. So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckity.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so the second, um, action item is the approval of, uh, expenditures for the architecture's pre-work.
There are none.
There are not any. Hi. Um, as, as they are
Leggett's gonna do a lot of upfront work, and, and normally, an architectural would charge a district, they're not. If the referendum fails, the risk was, we would give them tens of thousands of dollars for really plans we could not use. They've removed that, so if the referendum doesn't pass, we don't get charged. If the referendum does pass, then that's part of the natural work they would've done anyways, but it's just being put up front so we could hit our construction deadline.
Okay, so do we have to do anything with this, then?
I don't think so, so we can table this?
Yes.
But you're saying, let's move forward with the timeline that you've seen?
Yes.
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 Yes, but we tabled this particular motion because
There's no expenditure.
There is no expenditure connected to it, so, um, again, a thank you to Leggett and Nichols, Nicholas, for being such exceptional partners in this process, and, yeah. Okay, moving right along to our superintendent's report.
Um, very quickly, we are in e-learning tomorrow. Uh, that was a decision that was made while all the superintendents, uh, from the high school district that met this afternoon. Now, that, it seems, and one of the things that was discussed at the superintendent meeting was, we should all make the same decision, especially since we're in the same county, and the overwhelming decision of that superintendent group was to go to e-learning tomorrow, because there's anticipated intense, and what really led to that was, it's, at dismissal time, it's supposed to be some of the worst, and having our kids and our teachers and staff commute during that time could be, so we're being cautious, but based on the forecasting. So, we're in e-learning tomorrow, it's the first e-learning day of the year for us, so.
What, um, what can parents expect from each building?
The principals are communicating with parents, and there should be, uh, the teachers should be reaching out, too, at every grade level. So, that should be available no later than nine o'clock tomorrow for, um, all of our families.
Okay, so keep an eye on your emails.
Yes, please.
And remember where you put that packet that they sent home.
I kept it in the homework packet.
I know, I put it in, I only get, I only set it here.
Um, the behavior in the buildings, once again, we have young people who are learning and growing, and they make, young people mistakes, but overwhelmingly is incredible, so grateful to our families for their support, for our staff, for the great guidance to give our kids, and to our kids who I love, who are so really, you know, just engaged, working really hard, and overall treating each other well, it's a beautiful thing to see. Uh, quality review, awesome job, Dr. Braun, um, Leggett and Nicholas, what a beautiful gift they gave us, and all that detail that some people in the community were asking for, we'll publish it. Uh, the colocation, obviously, the board, uh, moved forward with that decision, which was something else the community had asked for. The other thing that I wanna say is, as proud of we, as we are for our college prep curriculum at the high school, we're equally proud of the students who are at the Technology Center, DuPage, what an amazing program, and there's such a, a variety of things that students can choose from. And our district is putting together an informational video, kinda highlighting the amazing opportunities we have.
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting.
Or vocational education, we're just as committed to those students, it's just as important as college prep, and it's not exclusive, some students take advantage of both, some students favor one over the other, but I wanna be crystal clear, the kids at TCD are excelling in a different way, but just as importantly, and that program is, I sit on their board, it is an amazing opportunity for our kids. And fifteen percent of our students choose that, some do not choose, but fifteen percent of our juniors and seniors, overall, do choose that as an option, and they can go into culinary arts, uh, HVAC, fire science, construction management, computer science and programming, there's just twenty different programs. And, uh, those students are excelling in their own way, and we're unbelievably proud of them, in a way that a small district could never afford those facilities, and our kids get that opportunity, it's really important, and we're putting together a video that highlights all that great work, so.
Let's keep telling those stories.
Yeah.
In addition to the, all the other amazing stories that we're telling.
Yes.
Cool, board reports?
Probably me, 'cause I have everything. Um, I wanna say thank you to everyone this past weekend, uh, it was happening at the high school. Um, we had Junior Sentinels game on Thursday night, and then on Friday night was the Festival of Fun and the Hall of Fame inductions from our previous students who got nominated. Busy night, busy, busy, um, the boosters did their biggest fundraiser, so thank you to everyone who contributed to that, this helps the coaches get wish list items, scholarships for the students, so, thank you. Secondly, our junior high competition squad is going to state tomorrow, in this weather, yes. The, the team has decided that parents and that will be driving them down to Peoria to perform tomorrow, so if everybody, the work, girls have worked so hard for their routine, um, and I really think they didn't wanna miss it, so they decided. So, if everybody could just put their thoughts and energies out there with our girls who, and parents who are taking them down to Peoria, they will be performing at two forty-nine, so.
Cool. Uh, there's no public comment, so moving into future meetings and events, we have an institute day, no student attendance on February fourteenth, uh, which is this Friday, and then we have no school for president's day on Monday, so we got a four-day weekend. Um, feels like these long weekends keep coming on e-learning weeks also. Just putting it out there. Um, Westmont High School's incoming ninth-grade night already, February twentieth, six-thirty PM at the high school, um, there's a family event for one, two, three Andres, February twenty-fifth, at six PM at homeschool, this is the
At homes.
It changed location, didn't it?
It went to Westview.
Westview Elementary, right?
Westview, uh, Junior High, I believe.
This is the partner event with
B-PAC between
B-PAC partner event between the, um, marker and our elementaries here with the dual language, so it's a, it's a concert.
I think because space was limited, they moved it up, I'm sorry, give me a moment to pull that.
That did come out, yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, it is moved to Westview Hills Middle School, uh, and six-thirty, Sixty-Fifth Street, so it's right off of Cass and, um, East on Sixty-Fifth.
Cool. Okay, and our next board meeting, uh, CUSD two oh one regular board meeting, February twenty-fifth, here at Village Hall.
Can I just add, uh, Drama Club, the play, Your Good Man Charlie Brown starts on the twenty-eighth, so right after that, so that weekend, so go support our Drama Club.
Awesome, okay, uh, moving right along, motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, sale or lease of real property.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Steckity.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Motion passes, okay, and, uh, there will be no action after closed session, so we'll just come back in adjournment.